Jake, if, for Jake or Donald, I can't mute when you're on your phone, but for anyone that's board member, if you're not talking, we'll just ask that you mute. We don't pick up the background noise.
Yeah, I usually just keep my muted the whole time, so.
Thanks.
I'll call this Board of Selectmen's meeting to order for Thursday, April 2nd. We'll start with roll call. Eric Gasperini is present. Phil Crossman? Bill is on mute. Bill, can you hear me? Are you present?
Yep, present.
Pam Allen?
Present.
Jake Thompson?
Present.
Donald Hall?
Present.
And if the other members in this room could please identify themselves. Starting with Andrew Dorr, Town Manager?
Yeah, Andrew Dorr, Town Manager.
Jennifer Desmond, Public Health Officer, Clinical Director, ICMS.
McKee, Ambulance Director.
And Mark Candage, Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director.
Okay, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Phil Crossman seconds the motion. Eric Gasperini votes yes. How does Phil Crossman vote? Phil, how do you vote?
Aye.
Pam Allen?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Arnold Hall?
Yes.
All right, we'll go on to the only item on the agenda, which is a conversation with the Public Health Team and the community's COVID-19 response.
Perfect. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. My name is Andrew Dorr, and I'm the Town Manager. With me tonight, as you heard, is our Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director, Mark Candage, our EMS Director, Kerry McKee, and Jen Desmond, our Public Health Officer and ICMS Clinical Director. Together, we make up the Public Health Team and are part of the Emergency Operations Center. The Public Health Team's job is to keep informed about the threat of COVID-19 to Vinylhaven and plan and implement best practices protecting the community. The folks here have done an amazing job and a huge amount of work on this very, in this very short time. And based on some of the questions we've gotten from you in the community, we just want to give you a chance to kind of go through and provide some of the answers to those questions, as well as any other information that we've, that we've heard that we think is relevant. If you don't have the answers at this time, or if you have questions as, as this meeting goes along, feel free to email them, the B H E O C at townofvinylhaven.org, or to my email, townmanager@townofvinylhaven.org, and we'll follow up with those at another time. One of the first questions we got, probably one of the more asked questions we've had in the last few days is, with the, with the new order, is staying at home. So does stay at home mean I can't go outside, go for a walk, or be outside and get fresh air, and I still walk, run, or bike with friends?
This is a great question, and I'm happy to clarify what I meant. If you or the people you live with want to go out for a walk, that is okay. If you want to walk with a friend, you must keep at least six feet apart. We recognize that being outdoors and getting fresh air is rejuvenating for some, so please, go for a walk if you are feeling cooped up. Also, as Florence Nightingale said many times, please keep your windows open. Very good for both sick and non-sick people.
Great, thank you, Jen. Another question that we've had from a few folks is whether or not they can still meet with their friends at the Fish House. None of us are sick, so what does this mean?
I'll take this one, Andy. I think that's a pretty, I've asked people not to bust my windows out, but the answer to that is a very strong no, so.
Great. Thanks, Mark. So another one we've had comes with whether I can ride around the island or not. So if you and your friends want to go for a ride, none of you are sick, you're young and healthy, why are you saying we can't go and do that?
That's a pretty easy one. We're saying this because the new reports from the CDC suggest that as many as 20% of people infected with COVID have no symptoms for the first few days. That means you're riding around with your friends, and you could be giving the disease to someone else. You could be getting the disease and bringing it home to your family and never show a sign or symptom for the first few days.
Got some questions on essential services on construction. Is any construction at all permitted that is not to prevent a building from falling down? Is it okay if the crew is one person? Is it okay if the crew is more than one, but they keep their distances? Is it okay if the work is outside, or if the work is inside, but the occupants are not there? Is it, is it okay for the work crew to come from the mainland? Is it okay to burn brush? I work alone in non-essential retail. Can I go and work in my studio? And also, what about fishing? For example, I might have a crew of three people on my boat.
Great. So Jen, I'll try and take that. So we, for some of these, we don't have a clear answer, since the mandates come out, but I will say we have reached out to the state to try and clarify some of these further. At this time, the non-essential construction and non-essential retail, as I said, is still being answered. If you are one of these business owners and have a question yourself, the advice we've been provided is to, is to email business.answers@main.gov to ask for clarification. The state has confirmed that burn permits may still be issued. Fishing is an essential service for, you know, for food production, but it still must be conducted in a safe manner, with at least a six-foot distance maintained throughout the day. And it may not be possible to go to work with a crew of three, depending on the space that you're working in.
So I know we've talked a lot about the ferry boats, so this is a great question we got. So what about the ferry? They've already cut runs from our schedule. Are they limiting walk-on passengers, do you know, Andy? Or does freight, does freight get a priority at this time? And are they stopping people from traveling if they say the travel is non-essential?
Great question, Mark. We all know the ferry service is our lifeline to the mainland, essentially our bridge. And what we've been told from the manager of the ferry service so far is that they'll continue to be operating on the published but reduced ferry service schedule. They've acknowledged that they are not an enforcement agency, but they will be asking the question when they're selling the tickets if the travel is for an essential activity as outlined in the newest order of the governor. They are working with all the towns on solutions, as the pandemic has created a very fluid situation. They're also going to be posting the executive order of the governor and listing, in a list of those essential businesses at the ferry terminals. I expect more changes to come over the next few days. We'll stay in contact with the ferry service to, to learn of what those might be, and as soon as new information is, is provided, we'll, we'll share that with the community.
Another question we received, several questions, about will bunkers, UPS, the post office continue to deliver? Will PIA continue to fly? Is it okay to go to the dump?
Sure, so, yeah, so as of right now, bunkers are still continuing to deliver. The post office obviously is deemed an essential service, so they'll remain open. PIA is, is at this time is still flying. And you definitely can still go to the dump, but please keep a, an eye on the town website as those hours of operation may change, so keep a lookout on that as far as those hours of operation.
Great, thanks, Mark. We had a few questions that were specific to COVID-19. So the, one of the first ones was, I work in an essential service. Are there some steps to take to protect my family when I come home from work?
Thanks, Andy. It's important to change your clothes, including your shoes, when arriving at home. Elsie, if you're listening, this is why I always have to come and take my scrubs off as soon as I get home. You should create a plan for disinfecting or laundering the clothes without exposing your family, and you should make sure you shower. Don't forget to clean things like your glasses, your cellphone, keys, work tools, computers, et cetera, and be diligent in self-checking your own health.
Great. Thanks, Jen, for that example. Many islanders have prescriptions and medicines that have ordinarily been picked up at mainland pharmacies and brought over to the island by friends and neighbors. I feel that this is a big issue, given restrictions on travel and recommendations, especially for older islanders, to stay home as much as possible. Is there a way that this group could address this issue?
Great question, Andy. ICMS has been doing a good job of making sure prescriptions are arriving. Some pharmacies are mailing prescriptions and may have opted to work with insurance companies to accommodate modifying the regular prescription to a 90-day prescription when they're able to. There are also a few options for taxing or, or other deliveries that may be possible, so make sure you contact ICMS or your primary care provider about your prescriptions.
Great. So another one we've had is whether or not the community will know if someone on the island is confirmed to have COVID-19. Kerry, what do you think?
Yeah, so the public health officer is notified by the CDC if there's a positive COVID test. It's not going to be kept a secret. At this time, we have no positive tests on the island that we've been made aware of. It may, it may appear a little bit awkward, as ICMS providers will also receive results for their patients, and Jen could be, both be the provider and the public health officer. But that information about the positive won't be given out, patient's name, patient demographics, where they live, those kinds of things, just whether we have a positive on the island. A confirmed COVID-19 should not change our behaviors, however. We're already practicing social distancing, and that is what we must continue to do. How we live our lives today can affect how the people in your community live their lives tomorrow.
Great. So another question that's coming in is about quarantining and self-quarantining. And what's the difference? What's different about that than staying at home?
Yeah, I can take that. So when you quarantine, basically, the simple answer is you and your family members cannot go to town or, or anywhere for essentials. So the stay-at-home is, you are allowed to do essential things as outlined in the executive order, but if you're quarantined, you're at home and don't leave for any reason.
So another question that someone has asked is, what will happen if a lot of people get very sick here and all at the same time?
That's a good question. This team here has been working really hard, along with ICMS, to think about what will happen if that is the case. We have plans in place to help patients care for themselves at home, as well as us being able to assist with their care at home. If a patient becomes too sick for home care, we will transfer the patient to a mainland hospital. In a worst-case scenario, if more people are critically ill, then we can individually treat at home, and/or mainland hospitals are unable to take patients, or if they're full, we will modify how and where we provide our care. We are close to completion on an alternative care plan. We likely would open an emergency site, so our ICMS and EMS providers could care for patients until they can be transferred to a hospital, and we'll keep people posted on that.
Thanks, Jen. So I know this is in the future, but what basis will be used to decide when it is safe to stop self-isolation? Kerry, what have you heard?
I've heard that we should rely on the guidance of the CDC to help determine when the virus is no longer a threat to our community. Even more than that, today, we're under a state mandated stay healthy, stay home mandate, and that will be lifted before resuming normal lives.
Great. So being with my family all day is driving me nuts. I used to have tea with a friend in the afternoon. Can't do that anymore. What can I do?
It's a good question. It's great to have a friend like that. Have you tried having a virtual cup of tea on Zoom, or perhaps another virtual platform like FaceTime? Or how about talking on the phone? As we mentioned before, you can go for a walk on your own or with a friend, as long as, as you maintain a distance of at least six feet and abide by the CDC safety guidelines. To de-stress, maybe there's a place that you can hide away from your family to give yourself some private time with a book, or get some outdoor time for fresh air. But just remember, if you do want to go for a walk with a friend, unfortunately, when you're riding in a car or a truck, you're really not six feet away from that other person. And you can't ride around with somebody unless they're part of your household. So make sure if you're going to meet somebody for a walk, you're taking a separate vehicle.
Great, great suggestions, Jen. Thank you. Hi, Andy, I got a question. Who can, who can we reach out to if we are anxious and need someone to talk to?
Sure. So there's a few options out in this commu, on the community right now. Some of the things that the medical center provides, and some things that the town has been trying to work to offer. So if you need help, do reach out. Hope is just a phone call away. Main statewide crisis hotline is available 24/7 for immediate crisis-oriented help. You can reach them by calling 1-888-568-1112. You can also try the main warm line, which is also available 24/7, and is, is available for connecting someone in need for mental and emotional support. The number there is 1-866-771-9276. ICMS offers behavioral health services. For those that are unaware, you can contact Dan Kenniston at ICMS at 207-863-9959, and option three. There's also an anonymous peer recovery programs. There's Narcotics Anonymous, which is N A main.org. You can go to C S O A A main.org for Alcoholics Anonymous. Naranon, N A R dash A N O N dot org, or Alanon, main A F G dot org. And for those that might have tuned in last week, you can tune in again Saturday at 4:30. We'll have a live Facebook conversation, talk about managing stress and anxiety. Our guests will be Avram Weiss, ICMS Behavioral Psychologist, and Kelly Richards, who teaches stress relief to adults and kids. Watch the town's Facebook page and public poster for details. With that, that concludes the question and answers that we've had. Again, if you have other questions that you need, would like to have answered, you can send an email to B H E O C at townofvinylhaven.org, or call 863-2168, or you can email myself at townmanager@townofvinylhaven.org. Well, that will go back into our select, regular part of the selectmen's meeting.
All right, so right now, we do need to discuss some changes to town services, and we want to actually let Andy handle that on a department, department by department.
Sure. So I've been working with, with some of the staff to figure out with the new, with the newest order from the governor. I think it's prudent that we go and, and look at the things that, at this point with this order, what is truly the most essential, you know, so you look at things that are born in statute, things that we have to provide, defects in roads and sidewalks, and being able to respond to those within a certain timeframe, you know, that part of the statutes haven't been relaxed or waived. Other parts of statutes for things like licensing for your, your vehicle registrations, or your dogs, or your boat, some of those things have been pushed during the state of emergency. So looking at that across the board for the, for the town, one of the things I'm suggesting we, we consider doing so that we possibly, so we don't have more than one person in the front office, the town office, at a time, is to consider, you know, alternating between two staff, and they could work half-days, one person in the morning, the next person coming in the afternoon, and then we'd have the ability to have another person be able to float or work from home and support as needed. So I'm just, that's something that I think we're going to look to try and implement. Library staff, starting today, we're, we're working from home. Some of the stuff can be done. We also have one of the staff still doing building checks throughout, you know, the days that they're generally open, just to make sure that things are okay there, if books have been returned, that they're able to put them back in the building. You know, Public Works is another example. With the new mandate, mentioned repairing the roads, we still need to do that. You know, but maybe we don't go and do every bit of preventative maintenance piece, or, you know, be in every day, all day. There's certain jobs that are going to be really hard to keep the six-foot distance. Certainly can't ride in a truck with, with another person and keep the six-foot distance. So I think some of this is, again, causing us to reconsider what we're doing when, during this, this, this new order. Transfer station, another example. If people are encouraged, you know, being ordered to stay at home unless they're going out for essential needs or services, or to go to work, that's essential. Do we consider scaling back hours? Do we look to modify how many staff are there at a certain time? Do we scale back certain, you know, collection of certain items up there? We already had closed the swap shop, but one of our other challenges, of course, is trying to stay ahead of the boat traffic. Instead of this time, as I mentioned earlier, the boat traffic and frequency of the trips isn't changing since the order came out. It's already been adjusted from last week, but they aren't, at this time, proposing further changes. But should that change, we're going to have to look at the frequency of our trucks and, and what's collected up there. That could become a problem. We're already seeing an increase in price because of the boat schedule change. So another thing to think about, you know, trying to line that up, and whether the service providers are able to continue to operate with, with that little uncertainty. But I will say the ferry service has been helpful in trying to make it work. No volumes down, which has helped to be able to get them on, but we still continue to try and work that out with the contractor and the ferry service. That's the, the code officer to, to think about, coming in only a couple days a week for a very short period of time, to check things like her phone and her email. So that's, we can have a, she can follow up with people on that. She'll be available for any sort of emergency situation, whether it's a septic, or some sort of plumbing issue, or to inspect a building project that's already been approved. At this time, the planning board is canceled its April meeting, given, given these changes. Wes, as the assessor, I'm going to set him up with remote access. He comes in once a week, as it is. So setting him up with remote access, he's actually, the work he's doing right now is more spring work and trying to get property records updated, thinking about possibly going out and doing some, some spring work, which includes site visits to properties to see what changes have been done, whether it's from permits and construction to just property value changes. So he might look to do some of that still at this time, but can do that on his own without coming in contact with anybody. Community development engagement. The last time we met, we talked about Gabe as a resource for the EOC and the community, and, and helping coordinate volunteers and some of the outreach efforts. He's done a great job on that, I think, so recognizing that, you know, scaling back some of the community development work, something that we're, we'll be talking about, so that the focus can be on the EOC support. But things like grant deadlines, we've been working on, she's been working on a few of those in the last week or two. So some of that stuff might still be there, but again, scaling back on some of the committee support stuff at this time, maybe, to focus more on what, on the COVID-19 response. Fire EMS, our marking carries, full-time staff have been primarily working out of the, out of the EOC in response to this. There's been some, some need, and the volunteers have been really good in assisting them with things that still need to happen, whether it's inventory or equipment checks, when they're monthly at the fire station. So they've been a big support for them, as they've been focused a lot on the EOC. Other than that, Harbor, Harbor and ACO, again, they, the state's relaxed the licensing at this time for dogs and boats. And so any response, you know, from that, you know, should be only for things that pose risk to health and safety of others, dangerous dogs, or that kind of thing. Other than that, I guess it's kind of more of an opportunity to discuss other things that you have questions about, you know, suggestions to think about changing differently. Just generally, what's the board think about?
I have one question. I see, I don't know if it was last night or two nights ago, that the Wells Board of Selectmen voted to ban all Airbnb rentals that are less than 30 days, and I believe closed hotels in the town lines. Have you heard if the state has pushed back on them about that?
I haven't heard if they've pushed back on them. I know a few other towns have. Most of what I understand is that those places also regulate short-term rentals. So there's usually a licensing or something that's established in ordinance that regulates their ability to do that.
Okay.
So I'm not aware of anything. I haven't seen towns that haven't put those things in place in the last two years go that route. I've, I've even seen, there were a few peninsula towns in the southern mid-coast area that were looking at, can they, can they choose not to turn utilities on water or sewer at seasonal residences? The PUC was at their meeting and said, no, it's a utility, you can't do that. So other places are also thinking about the, the seasonal residency, and, and again, the increased strain on the, on those communities as well, and where they already are lacking resources they know they're going to need. So at this point, I'm not aware of, you know, the ability for us to be able to regulate that short-term rental and hotel piece.
Right.
Some of that is the hotel business part of it, I think, is brought up in the governor's order, whether it's under the essential business or not, so.
Probably be something for us to think about later on, if we ever want to change, you know, ordinance changes, giving the town the ability to look at those sorts of things for short-term rentals in our ordinances. Does anyone else on the board have any questions, concerns? I'm not sure if we still or not.
Sorry. I, I would just, Andy said something about having the town office crew work half-days. Wouldn't it be easier to have them alternate days, so you wouldn't have to clean everything so often?
It, it could be. I can, I can work with them to figure out, you know, what, you know, what might be best in that sense. I know there's at least a few days a week, like, we have to do payroll on a certain day and print checks on a certain day, and then get them mailed out. We could look at doing, you know, full day, certain days of the week, or I think it's a matter of being available for the community generally. So, and we do have a, a line upstairs, which is the 2168, 8632168, that people can call for the EOC-type related questions related to this. So at least, there'll be at least one person up there all day. That'll be able to answer that. So I think between, between those two, we might be able to look at what you're suggesting, Jake.
I had, I had another thing about, about the dump. Has there been any? I, I've heard from a few people about, is there any way to have the town crew go and pick up the trash, so that there's less people going up there? People leave it out, or, I mean, is that, if you had a localized collection place, or something like that?
Considering that we'll have another month, it's something we can look into and see if there's a way to be able to provide that. I don't have a straight yes or no at this point, but if it's something you want, I can look into, see if it's possible.
I mean, there'd be less people in and out. And then the last thing I had was, I read online that the Casco Bay Ferry was having their crews do two-week on, two-week off, instead of alternating every week. In case someone gets sick, then, you know, it would, it wouldn't affect so many crews. Is that something that the main state ferry is looking into? Or, I mean, I think they should be looking into it.
I haven't asked them or heard that they're doing that, but I can follow up to be able to provide an answer to that question.
All right, that's all I had. Thanks.
Anyone else have any thoughts? Is there anything else you have for the board to consider at this time?
Just, we, we talked about it in our question and answer. I mean, very generally, we're, Kerry and Mark have worked up a draft. ICMS is reviewing, has reviewed, an alternative care site or facility plan. So that's just something that, it's early next week, we may, we're still looking, we have questions about, you know, the insurance, and the, the, sort of, you know, potential for a legal review on that, but working with ICMS in, in school to try and see as, you know, how we can work, work something out, in the, in the case that we might need to utilize that service. So we're, we're looking to meet and, again, go over that with those three, three parties there in the next few days.
Great. Is there anything else? Does anyone else have anything? Questions? Comments?
Yeah. I heard from Kerry a little while ago that perhaps this next, the problem that I'm, want to talk about may have been addressed already, but we've had some controlled substances that could not be put in the mail, but were prescribed by various pharmacies, brought over here by individuals, because there was no alternative way to get those substances here. Is it now the case that the medical center is going to see to it that those prescriptions are taken care of in a more, in a way that makes more sense and presents less of a risk to other people?
Um, we, and the medical center has sort of talked more in general about getting prescriptions. We haven't talked specifically about people with controlled substances. If there are people with controlled substances who are having a hard time getting their prescriptions, they should definitely call us, because we can help them with that. There are pharmacies, two of our pharmacies mail them. If the patients don't feel comfortable with that. We have had them mailed to the medical center before, but we could certainly work with a patient on that.
Okay, I know of two pharmacies that do not mail them, but I will, I'll refer people to the medical center from now on. If you have an alternative, means you're getting them over here.
Yeah, there's Jensen's and Kenovec will mail them. Those are the pharmacies that we sort of recommend, but if somebody can't use those pharmacies for whatever reason, then they can give us a call, and, and we can try to work something out for them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? In that case, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Second is by Phil Crossman. Eric Gasperini votes yes. Pam Allen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Donald Poole? Donald Poole, are you still there?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I vote yes.
And Phil Crossman?
Yes.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in.
Thank you.
Thank you.